Ask Jennifer to unmute me. So I can try. If I can't talk, you can go out of there.
It was either capital or finance. I think it looked like maybe the capital.
Can you, one of you ask Jennifer to unmute me? So I can test if I can talk.
So you want me to do some texture?
Call to talk to her.
Jennifer, can you unmute Jane?
You're unmuted.
Hello, testing, testing. Okay. Are we going to wait a couple of minutes for Amy or?
She's not coming. Or she's on, she'll be coming on Zoom, right?
It's six o'clock. Let's start. She'll jump in.
Okay. I am calling the January 4th meeting of the Hadley Select Board to order. If there's anybody recording this meeting, please let me know. Otherwise, the meeting is being recorded by Hadley Media and the Hadley Select Board Office via this Zoom meeting. Hearing no one recording. Please note that in the minutes. Okay, we're going to change the agenda slightly and start with the Hadley Business Council Formation. Molly, you want to go to that?
I'm sure. Can I just make sure, is, can everyone hear us?
Yep.
Just wanted to see if we could get this quickly on the agenda. So the idea behind the formation of a Hadley Business Council is that it would be an independent group made up of business owners. Kind of the genesis of this was some conversations for several of us who are, happen to be members of the Amherst Area Chamber, although that's not a requirement, but wanting to have a voice and also act as a sounding board so that when there are various initiatives or changes, that the town might be contemplating in terms of policies that would have an impact on the business community, just so that on the town side, we would know that this group existed. So it would be kind of eyes and ears that we could tap into. And primary goal is really to also improve communication with the business community. So through the chamber, as an example, we have, the chamber has a great communication mechanism in place to get the word out on different things. So the plastic bag issue being a good, good one that just came up this past week. So the Board of Health is able to leverage the chamber. And again, that information kind of flowed through us informally. So we're just looking to formalize that. And Kishore, you want to speak to it?
Yes.
Kishore, can you go up to the mic?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So the 30 some odd years that we've been here, Hadley especially, commercial zones changed a lot where things are a little bit more complicated or nuances as opposed to what they used to be. So communication is one big thing. There's a lot of small businesses that, you know, as Molly pointed out, don't know what's going on. And there's a lot of people who are trying to start businesses who sometimes don't know which direction to go in. So that's another aspect of the association or committee that we would start.
What kind of support role do you see the Select Board playing, if any?
Legitimizing it in a certain way, I guess. I mean, just the mere fact that the Select Board, if, let's say that the council had an issue that they wanted to bring forward, that you would give us audience, would be one way. And then from a communication standpoint, certainly making sure that if there are things that are being discussed, whether it's through the inspections department or here or the Bylaw Committee, that that information is being brought to this Business Council for discussion so that, you know, as a town, we'll be better by getting feedback before something happens instead of after the fact. After the fact, feedback's always wonderful, but it's not always the best feedback.
So in actuality, we certainly have a lot more businesses in town than Amherst does. We're a little bit more thriving in businesses than Amherst. I would think that, and I never understood why our businesses always went over to Amherst, where we had so many here, why didn't we have our own chamber? Why didn't we have our own group? And I think this is a good start to it. And I think that, you know, in order for us to have a better communication, this is, you know, a way of starting to do that. So I would rather, I would like us to be our own, where we would, you know, make rules and regulations and everything that we do anyway in the town really affects the businesses here in Hadley. And having that communication with people, I think, is a lot better than not having it.
When I was a business owner back in the 90s, there were several attempts, well, from 90s to 10, there were several attempts to have a business association. In my sense was, there really wasn't anybody willing to step up for leadership.
Who, where, where did it go or where did it start or?
They would have groups, they would invite everybody who owned a Hadley business. We'd get together, we'd have a meeting, and it would fizzle.
My standpoint, I think things have changed from back then. I think the businesses here, the ones that have been here for a long time, like ours, have grown and they have some more established businesses than there was. So I don't see that proceeding being a problem.
Good.
Right? But, you know, the latest example I could give you right now is just the Route 9 expansion. Businesses individually have issues with it, but they don't come together at all. They don't have a place to come together and voice their opinions about it.
And it is an issue. There's no denying that.
Whether this starts out small and stays small or starts out small and grows, one way or the other, I think it's, it's a good thing to have, as Molly said, a voice in the community to help get things out and a place to talk to and then a, you know, a centralized group to bring it back to us if need be. So I think it's a good idea.
I mean, it all starts too with people that are responsible for our building committee and our buildings and things like that, where people want to start up businesses. It's the building inspector, the electrical, the fire, the, you know, everybody that is involved with the startup of a company. And they, that process starts at Town Hall when they take out a permit and then proceeds, they usually get their information from Town Hall on how to go about setting up their business. So there might be, you know, an avenue of where we could, you know, tap into them too about how we could.
Association, yeah.
Association to do that too.
There's a lot of small businesses or people are trying to start businesses who, for whatever reason, maybe get intimidated or don't know how to navigate our Town Hall. And it's not difficult, but they do need like guidance at some points, which I think that would be another role that this association would play.
So who was, who was ahead of your association?
We haven't even, yeah. I mean, we're just kind of in the beginning stage and seeing.
We're just, it's in touch right now. It's just something that we want to bring up to the Board to get their thoughts and feedback.
I think it's an excellent idea.
And to the point of Town Hall, whether it's business or residential, we need to come up with some kind of a chain of events to help people understand what the processes are if I want to build a house or if I want to start a business or whatever. I used to be and probably still am the go-to person, other than Town Hall, for advice on how to do that kind of stuff because I've been doing it for such a long time. I know all the rules and regulations and it's kind of, we need one stop shopping in Town Hall rather than, okay, you got to go to here, 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 here. Oops, you forgot to go there. Now you got to go back and do it all over again. If there's a chain of events written down, I think it would be hugely helpful.
I think it is written down somewhere.
Well, I don't really think so.
Will we have a good standing? And if goes to every department, if somebody comes to one department, like Jim does all the time, if they're doing something to the paperwork, he'll say, okay, are business people in the standing? Like if the town, maybe that you need from them? It's not formal?
I think some kind of a written document would be really useful. If you want to A, B, or C, you need to do this in this order.
Who's going to create that? Who's going to create the document and it being about 20 of the variations?
Exactly. It would have variations. It would be an if this, then that sort of thing. But I think it would be well appreciated and encourage businesses to not be overwhelmed.
Well, those, those are the types of things that, you know, again, our group could kind of noodle on it, do that off to the side, and then maybe come to the town with a proposal on those types of things. And I guess the only other thing I just wanted to say is, just to comment that Joyce made, that this is not in any way intended to supplant or separate from the Amherst Area Chamber. It's kind of like a concentrated group, you know, focused on Hadley because again, Amherst has to worry about Amherst and Sunderland and Belcher Town, and they have different rules.
And their, and their area is so much different than ours.
Yeah, very different.
You know, they're not really what we have to entail on our Route 9. They have nothing of that nature of what we're dealing with.
But, you know, the chamber's been a very good friend in terms of wanting to help with that communication. So again, I think, you know, we're looking to work with Claudia to leverage that because it already exists. And Kishore's on the board too.
But it would be mostly Hadley's sector.
Yeah.
And most of that issues that, you know, if I consider myself, are regarded as Hadley. That's all I'm saying.
Well, you're not going anywhere.
Apparently not.
Especially if it's during construction time, Monday to Friday.
Yeah.
Do you think that there are other people who would just readily follow you to start this that are already members of the Amherst Chamber? Is there a core group you can say, we can get going?
In Hadley.
In Hadley?
Of Hadley people?
Not yet.
Okay.
I can tell you that. If you're talking beyond two or three people, I haven't started reaching out that hard yet until this was established. But I know that there's some people who would be interested in it and would like to have that communication.
And we'd like to get kind of a representative sample of different verticals.
Businesses.
You know, so, so people from the, you know, the agricultural community, you know, one group, at least somebody from, from there in particular always jumps out, you know, small, large. So that, I think that would be our next step.
Yeah, I'm all in favor. You don't need a vote from us. It would just.
Can I, can I ask for clarification? Do you see it as a Select Board appointed council or totally separate? That was asked of me, so I just wanted to clear, have you guys clear. But this is a separate entity that the Select Board would view a part of. Correct. Yes.
You would just come to us with concerns or whatever after you set up your, your committee and whatnot?
Or be, or, yeah.
And there would be a contact person for us to say, hey, this is coming down the pike, you know, we want you to be aware of such and such?
Yes.
No, in all likelihood, it would be me at least to start.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the liaison, if you will, from the Board to the group.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Great.
Thanks for coming.
Get your last soul out.
Well, I'm sure there's a lot of, of people that are interested in, hopefully seeing this tonight might perk some interest.
Hopefully.
Gotcha.
If not, you go banging on their doors.
I will.
I've done that in the past. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Now we'll go back to public comments. Are there any public comments tonight? Anyone in the audience, raise your hand.
There's definitely, I know there is.
Chris is here.
Okay, Chris, unmute yourself, please.
Chris who?
Sibley.
Hi there. My name is Christina Sibley. This is my husband, John. We are at 3 Birch Meadow Drive. And we joined into the planning board meeting last night to bring up the fact that we were hoping to get our road taken over by the town for maintenance. And there was a good discussion about what we can do to get that rolling. And we were wondering if there was anything else we should follow with the Select Board. Any suggestions or comments or anything as far as that goes?
Well, I think, you know, we can't have that discussion tonight because it's a bigger discussion than what we could talk about. But my idea would be that it needs to go first through the DPW and see what needs to get done on the end of it, of the people that own the development on Birch Meadow. And then let us know what needs, what they need to do.
And Scott, you're here. Do you have anything you want to say at the moment?
But this isn't, shouldn't be up for discussion on comments. This should be, this should be a, an agenda.
We should put it on the next one.
Sit down, Scott.
Am I wrong?
Oh, no, I'm, I was just, Scott got up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good exercise.
If we go through the procedural aspect of it, legal has sets and guidelines, though, has.
And we haven't seen those yet.
Yep.
So I would like to put that off till the next meeting.
One thing, they asked for suggestions. So I know I sent them to you to put a placeholder on the warrant. Has that happened?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's.
That was done originally.
Okay. So after that, then we just got to follow the procedures to get the mode accepted.
All right.
And put it down for the.
Thank you very much.
Next agenda.
Will be next week, two weeks.
Eighteen.
Weeks sixteen.
All right, thank you.
Fourteen or eighteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Yep.
Any other public comments? Consent agenda. We have warrants, AP 2325.
I don't have anything.
AP 2326. AP 23265. AP 23265. Those two are the same. AP 2327. AP 2327V.
Those are the same. Am I double up the numbers?
23265. They're right here. They're here.
AP 23265 you have?
Yes, twice.
Okay, so you have AP 2325.
Yes.
AP 2326.
Yes.
AP 23265.
Yes.
AP 2327V. AP 2327.
Okay, we just have one of them listed twice.
Yeah, okay. My apologies. Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Jennifer.
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chungalo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. New business, the recycle grant. And I see that Kathy Nelson is here. Kathy?
Hi. Okay, yeah, so I'm here to report to you guys about the recycling dividends program grant that I've applied for, for the town two years in a row now. So far, we, I don't, Carolyn, have we gotten this year's, I know we were awarded 1410. Have we actually received the money yet? Do you know?
I can check on that, Kathy.
Okay. All right. So so far, we've received $2,100 from this program. The way it works is it's through Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection and basically it's a program to encourage municipalities to do all sorts of recycling-related things. And the way the money that you receive is determined based on the different criteria you accumulate points for different items. And, and that's how the, and based on the population of the town or the actually, the number of people served by the municipal solid waste program, which for us is our transfer station. So so far, we've received $2,100. I guess you have the record in front of you. 1,540 of that we have used to purchase Earth Machine backyard compost bins. We're, we're buying them from North Hampton DPW, 10 at a time for $54.60 apiece, which is a really good price. They're like well over $100 retail. And then we've, one of the ways that we got points, we got two points because we are selling them to Hadley residents for $25 apiece. So so far, we've purchased 25 bins from North Hampton and sold 20 of them. And that's about it. That's what we're doing with the money. There's some discussion, somebody on the Hadley Climate Change Committee, well, the committee is, we're working on a compost promotion program in the town. Catalina is the person who brought this up and she's applied for some grant money from the Cultural Council to have someone design and make a big banner that she wants us to put up at the transfer station, which I think is a great idea. Anything we can do to promote composting. We don't know yet if the Cultural Council is going to give her the grant money that she applied for. If they don't, then maybe we can use some of this grant money for that banner. I don't, you know, that's a kind of wait and see. I like having it for these compost bins because they're selling pretty much as soon as we get, we just got 10 more. When was it? About two weeks ago? And I've already sold five of them. So they're probably going to go pretty fast. Eventually, I think it would be nice if we could set up our own account with this, the company that North Hampton gets them from. But so far, we've had trouble. They don't call us back. We've tried to set up an account with them, but we've had trouble doing that. So for now, we're just buying them 10 at a time from North Hampton. When they place an order, they do it for 20 and we get 10 and they get 10.
Any questions?
No.
No, good work.
Thanks for what you're doing, Kathy.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right, Jessica, you're up. Early voting, opt out or opt in?
Okay. So in-person early voting started back in 2016. It was really successful. People loved it, but it was pretty much only in person. Obviously COVID hit, we all got whacked with that one. So the state expanded it to by mail as well. So the Voters Act has changed everything now where the Select Board has to vote in. I'm sorry. They have to go opt, they have to opt out of early voting by mail, but you have to opt in to early voting in person, which kind of doesn't make a lot of sense, but that's what they're making us do. And the elections I'm talking to you about today are not the state and federal elections because initially only state and federal elections. People do the in-person voting, but the state is expanding it to all elections. So we are annual town election and our special elections. So that's the only thing I'm speaking of. And every time you make this vote, it has to be done for each particular election. People can't do a blanket and say, okay, we're going to do it this way the whole time. So I'm going to have to come, you guys are going to re-vote on this for every election that we have. And that's town and voters.
Is, would a ballot vote be considered an election or is that separate?
Well, that'd be an election. That's separate.
That would be. So if, if we have a finance issue that is.
But a ballot one, we, they never can do a write-in or an absentee ballot, can they?
For every election.
They can do an absentee, they can do an absentee ballot.
Every meeting, obviously not.
Okay.
For an election, there's always an absentee.
Oh. All right, so your request.
So my registrars recommend, again, the Select Board vote out of early voting by mail. And the reasons I have for that is the initial time it takes to process all the packets, the tracking of the packets, the separation of the ballots, the cost it takes to mail the ballots, receiving them back in. What was really frustrating to me, especially during the primaries, I think we sent out over 1,000 ballots and we got maybe 600 back. So I just think that's wasteful as far as time and money that we're paying people to do that. The reason why I want to do the opt-in for early voting in person is because it worked so well the first few years pre-COVID. Now we're going back to the world, you know, kind of post-COVID, trying to get things back to normal. And we're not like the state and we're not going to send every single resident an early vote application. Because if we did it with those and the state sent those out, we're not going to do that as a town. So I think that people would appreciate me having the hours open during Town Hall for them to vote and do it for like 17 days before the election. So we still have early voting. And absentee voting is not affected by any of this. Absentee voting would stay as this.
Jess, what about people who are in like nursing homes and who don't want to come in? They have to go absentee.
The only difference is early voting, you don't need a reason at all. Absentee voting, you're there out of town, you have a disability, or you can just do this.
I'll make a motion to accept opt-out.
I'll, I'll second for discussion, but I have some questions from a constituent.
All right.
Okay, so it's about the mail-in voting part of it. Given the current rise in COVID, RSV, flu, keep mail in so that people don't have to come into Town Hall, let alone the clerk's cramped office. And these are just things that were written to me via email. As Molly said, what about people confined to nursing homes or others with mobility issues? What if you're out of town? So you've got that with the absentee ballot. And the same thing with the nursing home or mobility issues?
The state allowed COVID out of the initial apply for absentee ballot.
Okay, okay. So.
To apply, do they have to come in person to your office?
In-person early voting, no application, they come in and vote. That's it.
Absentee.
If it's by mail.
By mail.
For early voting in absentee, they have to submit an application. For early voting, it's every single election, whereas an absentee ballot can cover all the elections.
So if somebody doesn't want to come into your office, there's a form online they can get and send to you?
Absentee.
Perfect.
Okay, there's one last question or a multitude of questions that relate to one issue. Who are the Board of Registars? Are there meetings taped by Hadley Media? Are they a public entity? Was their discussion of this change public and is it available to be posted on Hadley Media?
The only meetings with the registrars I have is after elections to certify UCal votes and all of that. But a few of my registrars have been out of town, but I can give you the list and the names if you'd like.
Okay. And, and their meetings obviously aren't taped by Hadley Media?
No, I just have a lot of minutes.
Okay.
And again, that's after state elections. And the only other time we meet is if there was a questioning on somebody's residency. And thank God, we haven't had any of those.
Jess, do you need an answer tonight or if we wanted to? I'm just thinking there might be other people who are just winding up about it.
My recommendation is on how I think the election would run most smoothly. Just doing 1,000 extra absentee, early ballots adds like 130 extra hours to run office. If you make it into county, it's one process, it's probably seven to 10 minutes from start to finish. But again, people forget that we have absentee. We always have absentee. That's always a vote by mail option.
And you said COVID is a valid reason for that.
Disability, can I come in?
I'm just wondering if it's good to get the information out and then maybe we could just vote it at the, the next meeting, just in case there's additional public comment about it.
It has to be like 25 days prior to the election.
When does that?
I'm sorry, how many, Jess?
Four, five days.
When does the clock run out on that?
Okay.
May 3rd.
But the election's May 17th or 16th.
Yeah.
So 40 days.
End of March.
Okay, so we, if we do it, vote on it the next meeting?
Yes.
Then it's no problem.
We have plenty of time for you.
There's still going to be an early voting option.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think what Molly said is, is valid, that let's see if any, if there's anybody that comes out to, to really have a concern about this so that we can. out to really have a concern about this, so that we can talk about it, and...
And it may just be more educational, again, like you're saying, reminding people that we're not taking
anything away from them.
Not in anything substantial way.
Right. And I think a lot of people appreciated the in-person voting in my office, and it's not in my camp office. We have one we set up in the hallway.
Well, I think the main thing, the difference in terms of the early voting by mail is the saving of the cost. Instead of doing a blanket thing, anyone who wishes can do it. But we're not going to send out a blanket ballot to everybody in town.
Say yes, we're doing it, and no, we're not. If you say we're voting in-person, you have to apply for absentee ballot.
Right.
So the whole thing with federal and state elections, if they would send us the packets, you know, pretty much pre-made, the only thing we'd have to add is ballots. They're not going to do that for a local election. So there's a time doing that, and then the tracking. Ballots don't get returned, when there's mistakes made on them, I have to resend a second ballot out. So again, I think a lot of people appreciate the in-person voting more than the voting.
So if we vote on it in two weeks, it's not going to impact anything?
I was actually supposed to be on the agenda in two weeks, but I accidentally put on this.
Okay.
Well, there you have it.
The plan came together.
So, but again, that's my recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We'll see you in two weeks, and you can say it all again.
I guess I'll take away my motion.
Oh, that's right.
That's the motion, and he seconded it, so you're going to have to unsecond?
I will unsecond my second.
Yep.
All right. Are you taking yours?
I guess so.
All right.
Well...
Town Administrator, goal, achievements, and performance evaluation.
So I'm going to refer you to the documents that, there's a lot of documents under this part. Jane has asked me to go over these and read these and act, I want to elaborate a little bit on it, but I'm going to walk you through which document you're going to be opening up. All right? So if you go to the final letter to Select Board, you know, when I put "final" on all these, doesn't mean that's when I'm done. But this was my final draft. So the final letter to the Select Board, do you see that?
Yep.
And I'll read that. Dear Select Board members, thank you for this opportunity to share with you my achievements to date and goals for '23 and beyond. Some of these goals will cascade into following years due to the complexity of funding and staffing needed to accomplish them. As you are aware, I'm keeping my third year as town administrator. Although this is the first year I've been formally asked to present this information, I did include a copy of my town administrator's letter that was presented in the budget book in February of 2022, which reflects last year's goals in a more general presentation. So that is the second document is the town administrator, TA budget letter. So I won't go into detail on that, but a lot of what was accomplished without a formal presentation of my goals is highlighted there that was put in that budget book. Since I began in September of 2020, my efforts have focused on understanding the uniqueness of Hadley and adapting my experience in municipal management and financial planning to best serve the town as your administrator. I am thankful for the support I've received from the staff, the residents, and the Select Board. So now you're going to go to the document that says final achievements.
How do I go back to that?
Final administrator achievements. Final.
Yep. Oops.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay. And this was from September 2020 to December 31st, 2022. And the first area of focus is town departments. And this is, as you can see, is in bullet form. That's how I do best in explaining things, but I will, when I feel it's necessary, I'll elaborate a little bit more. But my achievement with the town departments is identifying unique skill sets and work experience in employees, and utilize those assets to benefit operations and efficiency. This approach has maximized potential and enhanced the quality and accuracy of financial reporting and preparation. Worked closely with the former and present DPW Director to identify critical program and infrastructure failures, prioritize projects, and identify funding needs and source. And I think if you look at the last two years at our meetings, the ability to go out on the field with Scott as he identifies issues, we have worked really well together to prioritize and bring those that are most critical to town meetings for funding. There's also times where we're dealing with infrastructure failure or problems that will go out together. And again, even if it's finding a source that we need right now to fund something to do with that. Directed the practice of a work order system for building maintenance to track workload. There really was anything in place to see Gary's workload and what his future needs are going to be. So that has been put in place so that there's a documentation of how much work he's giving how many calls he's getting to respond. I worked closely with the Board of Health to transition from outsourcing health inspections to hiring a health inspector. Some of you know that when I first started, we were outsourcing for health inspections, and we only did about, it was only for about 100 inspections a year. As you know, we do a lot more than that. And right now, we have a really good health inspector as employee, and one of my goals will be to increase in that as well. Assisted in the final launch of the Perning software for the Board of Health. Assisted the Conservation Commission in hiring an agent. But you will see, Shana will be retiring. Assisted the ZBA to help clarify responsibilities and guidelines for meetings and to research educational resources. And there was a whole period of time when I first got here, locating the offices to make it more accessible for the public, moving buildings downstairs, moving town administrator and inspections. Jennifer's positioned upstairs, a little bit more privacy for the town administrator, she's not right there as you walked in. Human resources and labor relations. I have an open door policy for all employees, no matter whether it's department heads or staff. Regular presence in the buildings outside of the town hall. I've initiated progressive discipline and successfully facilitated two department heads' separation agreements that took a great deal of work. And I felt those just, that would really well for the town as well as for the employee. Negotiate transition of hiring and promotion and promotion to fill those management vacancies. I think one of the things that has been a concern of mine is identifying points of failures with different departments. So I use this example, you know, if one of our department heads won $5 million and decided to walk off the job tomorrow, we truly have points of failure when they're not capable, they're out on sick time. So if you see in my budget request the past couple of years, it's trying to get more support staffing there, so that when someone's critical management position is out, someone can step in and do some of those tasks. And I'm continuing to encourage all departments to cross-train when possible. I'm always trying to reach out to area towns to research interest in sharing part-time positions. I tried that with accounting. When we were looking at hiring somebody in-house versus having, outsourcing accounting. And then conservation, when we had that sudden departure, I reached out to other towns who also had part-time conservations and tried to combine those, which we will continue to do now that we will be into a resignation. And with the assistance of the HR manager, negotiated three collective bargaining contracts in a relatively short period of time. Directed the HR manager to submit a grant application for a compensation classification succession plan. Funding is approved. We developed our RFQ and advertised, and we have a next step, and we'll keep you updated on that. Financially, continue to meet at least bi-weekly with the assessor, the collector, the treasurer, to review financial statuses of the town, review revenues and expenses to date and other related matters. We meet monthly with the assessor, collector, treasurer, and representative of the Select Board and Finance Committee. Right now, that's Molly and Amy. Identified in September of 2020, when I first got here, learning the financial aspect of the town as well as the projects that were in place. Just to identify the unfinished projects that were approved at town meetings but were never completed. With the research and the reporting provided by the treasurer, we were able to meet with the departments and boards responsible for these projects. As a result, the treasurer was able to release, reallocate, and appropriate, reappropriate these funds. One of the things I have done the past two years is I sit with each department head as we go over the budget, and we're trying to make it simpler, eliminate redundant line items in the budget that were unclear, confusing, and streamline similar expenses into one line item. I've initiated an audit of all office equipment throughout the towns to see if leasing is more cost-effective, which I do think it is, that is beginning to show soon. Created a capital improvement plan working group. I've asked the treasurer, a representative of the Select Board, capital planning committee, and the Finance Committee to assist me in creating a five-year capital improvement plan to present to the capital planning committee and to the Select Board that that long-term plan is critical of the bond rating and the financial stability of the town and planning. Directed the DPW to create a purchase order system to eliminate unpaid invoices at the end of the fiscal year, with the intent of eliminating that at special town meeting in the fall, having to pay those prior year balances. And I think we're really making progress with that. And I also monitor on a monthly basis all the departmental expenses, not in a micromanagement way, but to be able to flagline items throughout the year to correct accounting or departmental posting errors. With the town meeting, I simplified the warrant so it's easier to read. Remember, there was multiple different versions of it, and reached out to everyone who uses that warrant, every working document, to make sure it was, I didn't simplify it too much, but I think it eliminated some confusion with the multiple copies. And I think you all know how successful the special town meeting was, introducing PowerPoint to the department heads and the support staff to use at town meeting to present needs or requests visually. Provide a tool for the treasurer to present her debt and funding analysis and plans to the voters, which was extremely, extremely helpful. The ribbon-cutting event, which I coordinated and provided oversight, the extremely well-attended ribbon-cutting event in 2021 for the senior center of the library and the North Haven substation. Some of the initiatives include the Dyke levy assessment and maintenance. I took a lead role in securing an engineer in 2021 to complete Phase Two of the levy analysis and mapping procedures, and successfully received town meeting support to Phase Two. I'm continuing that project, working with Massachusetts Silver Jackets on the FY23 Hadley Flood Risk Management Outreach Project, which will provide the much-needed education out to the community on flood protection. And I continue to work with the engineers to develop a maintenance plan that involves different levels of maintenance with cost estimates, and ensured that the basic level of maintenance was funded in FY22 budget. The DPW trailers definitely identified a severe deterioration of the administrative and rate room trailers, reached out to local legislators and received earmarks to help with that renovate those. Found out replacing them is maybe too expensive, we didn't have enough money. So we're now renovating them and making them a healthier place to work in. And confirmed with the treasurer that an article for feasibility studies with other buildings had enough money left over to hire an architect for a feasibility study for the DPW building, and we just finished our second meeting, and it was a great committee, and I'm very excited about that. The bylaw committee was formed at the request that I requested from the Select Board, and the streetlight conversion project is now complete and pending receipt of the incentive from Eversource. Business and resident relations, this is going to piggyback a little bit on what we were talking about earlier. But I do consistently reply immediately to residents or businesses when there's concerns that come to my attention. I use a team approach with the DPW to meet at residents' homes. It's not uncommon for Scott and I to do that together, or at local businesses when issues occur regarding infrastructure or road repairs. And responding quickly, I'm just finding it so important, with the MassDOT levy project, as Kishore mentioned, some of it's just communication. And I can't always solve their problems, but I can at least be that intermediate between the Valtasar, MassDOT team and the local businesses. And they have expectation, appreciation, even though I can't always solve their problems. So I do meet on a regular basis with representatives from local businesses, restaurants, and hospitality. And I do make an effort to attend special events in town. The COA is very good about inviting me to special events, especially 100-year birthday events. Climate Change held a workshop that I attended, Trump Retreat, the Memorial Day Parade, and the 9/11 traveling memorial. And whenever a board committee asks me to attend one of the meetings, I do the best that I can to do that. I think one of the things that I'm very comfortable with, and it has helped, is I've developed and maintained a strong relationship with our senator and our state representative, and the relationship that I had established with the county governor certainly made a highlight of the ribbon-cutting event. So those are my achievements, and I'd just like to wrap it up with my goals before we move on to Jen. My goals for '24, but they will be starting now. This is what I want to start immediately. We do need to update the organizational chart. It's outdated. It is still the organizational chart that was used when we had some elected positions. So I'm working on that to present to you for approval. And we will be completing the compensation classification succession plan. We will complete the employee handbook update. It got stalled a little bit on the new unions that are forming, so we're looking for guidance from our town council on how to proceed. One of the things I'd really like to do is have department heads, you often see DPW, you often see police and fire, but I'd like to bring in the other department heads to update you on what's happening in their departments. I think it would be very helpful for you to see what's happening. This may seem silly, but I do think that I would like to try to secure funding to hold some employee recognition, honoring years of service milestones. You have, unlike many other communities, you have people who've been working here for over 30 years. And I think even five-year and 10-year is, it's important to recognize that. I'm not sure how to do that, but I do want you to know that it is a priority for me to recognize those that are invested in having a state here. I would like to reevaluate IT services, custodial, and accounting. I have some suggestions on there on how that might be done with IT, and also looking at intermunicipal agreements with other with other towns for accounting. And either other areas that we need, such as building inspection, where we could use more assistance with that. I want to look at the pros and cons and present those pros and cons to you regarding in-house versus outsourcing, and let you be able to make that decision, but I want to get all the information to you. I would like to, this is, I feel like the retirement with our conservation agent has made this more critical and something to look at sooner, is to work with conservation planning and ZBA to look at what would be the best position to have in Hadley. And I do see the use of a land use coordinator, where I think we should look at that, whether it's a land use coordinator, whether it's a planner. But we have a need to have a position to help both of those departments. The boards and committees and volunteers, I'd like to update the volunteer handbook. When new committees are formed, I think it's important to provide a purpose, a scope of work, and an end date. And definitely work with Jen to do an ethics and open meeting law training to all of the elected and appointed officials. I want to take more of an effort to submit press releases as needed when we have vacancies, not just do it on the website, but to actually do articles. I think hosting a virtual open house for boards and committees to entice new volunteers would be helpful, as well as creating a citizens' resource guide with descriptions of each board and committee and volunteer roles. I put in here a succession plan for the Planning Board, and I referred you back to that collaboration to work with those three departments. That is one of my biggest concerns. There's so much knowledge there, and if any of those board members won $5 million and left, he'd be in big trouble.
I'd go with him.
I don't know where I'd go.
I would continue to support the Climate Change Committee to consider bringing community designation. Financially, definitely a priority is to review the water and sewer rates and recommend appropriate adjustments if needed. If you remember, David Nixon had a state of Hadley report. I would like to take the time to focus on that and update that. It was very helpful. And absolutely look at other areas for central purchasing. I do think there's cost savings involved in doing that. I want to develop and work with the finance team to develop and prepare a long-term financial forecast for our budgets and revenue. I will continue to manage town finances in a fiscally proven manner that strikes a proper balance between funding the important town balance between funding important town services and affordability for taxpayers. I would say that is the primary goal of that finance team, as well as the finance committee I know as the select board as well. I do, it's probably on a weekly, sometimes daily basis, that I am working with businesses that are impacted by COVID-9 and so you will sign already seeing me out there in my vest and I will continue to do that. I would like to continue to be a sounding board and provide encouragement to businesses regarding the plastic production bylaw. IT and technology, I would like to review the IT management operations and investigate the need or potential for staff and shared resources with other entities. Excuse that typo that I just saw. And it's really important that we switch the town's domain from .org to .gov and ensure we still have some employees that are using Gmail and things like that and that's what we should be doing now. I would like to bring back all of you using a Chromebook. I think it's the best for the town if you're using a Chromebook, you're not your own personal devices. It's tinier, they're not as, you're not going to like them as much as your own laptops, but I do think that's important, so I would pursue that. And continue to work with Chief Spake, be able to finalize the timeline for the completion of the five or two new school buildings. Town buildings and space needs and opportunities, facilitate, intercede if necessary. I am concerned that we need to get that hood and library off, get that bid document out and work with the architect to finalize that. I would like to evaluate present and future space needs for town hall, pursue opportunities within the town hall and other town-owned properties that we need to be creative and figure out in the RBC of growth we need for staff that we have in excess in order to put additional staff. Investigate long-term opportunities for office and mean space, including town-owned space or acquiring private real estate, preferably in the town center. Remember, this is additional years, this is not next year, I'm not including those in that. This is very dear to my heart. I would like to pursue funding sources to paint the town hall and replace the windows. It grays me when I pull into that building and I don't see a beautiful white building, that gorgeous picture of the 353 year event. So that is what I have for you and do you have any questions or any clarifications in anything that I presented?
Thank you for what you've done.
Too many goals.
That's a lot.
It's a lot of goals.
So I, I just, I can't wait till next year so I can tell you everything that I, that I can do. And again, I did say not just next year.
So I have one question.
Sure.
About the fire, hiring somebody for the fire department and IT. Do we have somebody in mind that has the skill set?
That's more of an example.
Okay.
I think there are positions out there that will be being hired, that may, newer positions that are coming on that may have that skill set. So I was just kind of planting the seed.
To the benefit of the rest of the town, too?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
So, and then thank you for, you absolutely put a lot of work into that going back, you know, for your entire tenure, with everything that you've done. So I know that took a lot of, a lot of time to put that together, too. And, but I do want to just kind of leverage off of what Joyce said, when she said too many goals. I think what I envision seeing would be like four, five kind of overarching goals. And typically, you know, you'd look at SMART goals or the acronym, right? So in the past, what we've done is, I think back to old David Nixon, looking at Chief Mason, Chief Spankable, where when, from a performance evaluation standpoint, you know, you've got the basic job description duties, you know, communication and dependability, all of those types of things. But then we would have like four or five key goals with specific deliverables with, so there was a timeframe. So they were specific, they were measurable, achievable, whatever the acronym is, I don't remember, but they're, and so I'm thinking back to like Chief Mason, I remember one of his goals was to position the department for accreditation. So we knew what was involved in that and then he said, okay, by June 30th or whatever, I'm going to move us from here to here. And it was something that was very, you know, tangible. You could, you could see it and he could say, I got it done or I didn't get it done. Chief Spankable updated all of the SOPs and whatever the acronym is there, like standard operating procedure. So that was one specific thing. And so I'm wondering if there's a way to take what you've done, like I hear a lot of human resources in there. So is, you know, is there a way to kind of boil that down into something that says, you know, by, whether it's June of 2024 or December 31st of 2023, this is what I'm going to have done? On the financial side of it, I'm wondering, I mean, I'm, the piece that's missing for me is a strategic plan. You've got a bunch of elements of a strategic plan in there and I'm wondering if maybe we could, we could bring that up to, you know, having, you know, having, having that pulled together with IT and some of these other things being part of it? Am I making any sense? I'm prattling here.
No, I, I kind of agree. I kind of, I really like how you've already laid this out. I think there's an element of specificity in here that I can honestly appreciate because you have taken the time to go in, not just create bullet points, but create bullet points within bullet points. So I think, in my opinion, this is actually very measurable. And as you said, you're not necessarily indicating that these all need to be done within this fiscal year. And I don't know, and correct if I'm wrong, that we haven't actually decided how your evaluations are going to go, is that right?
About five minutes.
Okay. So no, no, that's fine. Apologize, the dog. But I really like this because you've actually set yourself up quite a bit in here and I think that there's a lot to off of. I don't know if you're, you know, Molly's point, I do understand that there isn't exactly like deadlines or dates, but I also know that your job is, is so, there's just so much going on all the time, every day, that you can't exactly give yourself a specific date, if that makes sense. Is there anything from what Molly said that you think maybe should be changed?
I guess I want to listen to everybody's input to help me figure out exactly what the next step that you guys want.
I, I think your job is, is fluid. So you react and have things to do on a day-to-day basis, but your, but your, your job is like, you don't know what's going to come up. And so you kind of take the bull by the horns each day. You have a goal of what you want to do each day to start a process on some of these goals, which I can see, but then something else comes up. So, and, and that may lead to you doing another goal where you hadn't started yet, but it ends up being that. So I mean, a lot of these things will turn into that over the next year or whatever, that they'll get done because as far as I'm concerned, you've done a lot in your three years that you've done here and what you've had to do and jumped in on every occasion getting things done. And I appreciate that and I know you're a go-getter and that you do a lot to bring things together, which shows in what you've accomplished in just a three-year term and matter. So, you know.
I don't, I almost don't want you to, to put in, you know, deadlines on each things because you can end up setting yourself up, you know, for failure that way, where to Joyce's point, you might do something on your list that had like a later finish date while you're trying to complete something that had an earlier finish date. And I don't want us to get so obsessed with dates and timelines that it affects the way you're able to do your job.
One of the things that might be useful is, you have a huge list. Everybody agrees you're ambitious, if nothing else. Perhaps to prioritize that and say, these are really critical to get done for the town sooner than later. Everything needs to be done.
There is a sub thing that you don't see here. I do prioritize that so that if you want to see that.
But sharing that might be.
Yeah, and that does to, I don't know, Joyce or any, to your point, it changes from day to day.
It does, of course.
Priorities can get switched in a heartbeat.
Yeah.
Yeah, I own a business that runs similar to the way you, your job. And you go in in the morning and you say, I want to do this, this, and this, and you end up doing that, that, and that because the phone rings or Scott calls or something happens. So I appreciate that. There's, it's really hard to nail down when this stuff is exactly going to get done, as has been previously said, but because there are so many things, I do agree that it would be good for us to see some kind of priority list from you.
All right. Jen, do you want to tell us?
And we'll help you with that.
Yeah, we're happy.
We'll help you with your priorities if we have to. I mean, we're more than happy to be there for you to see whatever else you might need for us to do.
We're, we're here to work together.
Yeah.
Right?
Thank you.
Right.
I think we could organize your goals by like HR, financial, community, and have some subsections to keep it organized.
All right, so Jen, you helped put this together. Tell us what you got.
I did. So this was actually taken from other towns who have also done these same things. So the kind of the procedure is Carolyn might got her goals and her kind of self-evaluation of what she's done. Then the next step would be you all filling out the evaluation number. We attached a copy of one that Carolyn also looked over and thought was fitting. A lot of other towns used it before we just moved to the MNA site, so. And then kind of gather that feedback. I found a 360 review, we can have some of the different department heads, Scott and Mike and my, the people that work with Carolyn day-to-day, get their feedback, then compile it all together and then meet back.
And I thought that, I mean, we talked about this evaluation, you and I did several months ago, about it being important. I mean, we see what you do for us and whatever, but we don't always see, I mean, we have a feeling or we have a gist of what you do with other departments or whatever, but I think it's good for us to know their feedback and we talked about that, too, that that's part of the evaluation process of when you're the administrator of a town and you work with all of the departments, it's good to get their feedback. And I think that's important, too, that we all work together and, and not that they're evaluating you, because they're not, they're just giving us some feedback on how you have responded to them.
Well, they're helpful for me. I've done it in the past with employees and it's, it's helpful for me because I can't get caught up on the day-to-day operations and is there, and if I don't hear from a department for a while, like I purposely went and met with the COA staff to say, what's going on? All of the departments, I kind of, I'm, you don't hear from them a lot. And I said, no, we need to hear more from you. And so it is important for that and we're still working on a 360. And I tweak it a little bit because I also want to find out what the employee, what are their five-year plans? I kind of come down to things at the same time, so.
So a couple of questions I had, I mean, the evaluation forms, fine, I mean, they all tend to be pretty similar.
You can add or change like little details if there's something people want on there.
I'll have to come in and get one because I don't have one.
You can, can I? So the questions I had for the performance evaluation, so what period of time is?
That is a good question.
Yeah, because this refers to like pandemic management and I'm like, I'm kind of hoping it was behind us. I suppose it's still kind of ongoing, but.
We are still pandemic.
It's based on the time I was here, which was right in the middle of the pandemic. So it's probably looking, you guys weren't here, Randy weren't here.
Yeah, no, no, so that's when I saw that, I said, oh, I mean, normally we wouldn't be doing a three-year performance review.
Right. Yeah, yeah, I was interested. Can I focus on more recent?
Well, I think that Molly's asking us to set some parameters because things back then may be totally different than now, so.
Well, and I, and I don't feel that when you bring on new members of the board to have them be able to evaluate the administrator when they haven't actually worked with them. And when we first had this conversation, I didn't feel that Molly or Randy actually had the expertise or whatever of knowing what Carolyn's work had been or what she's done. And, you know, I think in getting to know somebody, you get to see the other evaluations that people do and how they've worked with her over the years. And I think that was important for you to read those up on, although, you know, us having been on the board, we at least know what Carolyn has done and how she's worked. So that was one of the reasons I thought the 360 was a good way to evaluate.
Yeah, no, 360 is fine. I'm just asking a practical question.
Yeah.
I mean, so if we're.
So what's our timeline?
I've never seen a three-year performance review before, thank you. I mean, it's just unusual. So, I mean, I would, are we doing an evaluation now? Are we not doing, I mean, I'm assuming we're going to do something now, right? And then question, just kind of the timeframe.
So how about January 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2023? That's, and it's 2022. Seven months of your time on the board, which is more than half of a year, and it's the most current 360 period we have. Does that make sense?
Which for me.
Okay.
So that.
How about the other, are they done by like fiscal year or are they done by the calendar year? I just wanted to.
The fiscal year.
Yeah, I do fiscal year, or it depends on when their contract was.
Which would be by our contract year.
Because I'll negotiate my contract probably in March or July.
Could kind of get on the contract year.
Right.
Right.
So it would be actually due like July 1st? Is that what we're saying?
No, I think we're doing the performance review as soon as possible.
Right, soon as we can.
Because we want to have it done before we even start talking contract.
Okay.
Right, so that Carolyn's got feedback and both directions.
And we don't want it to run into town meeting preparations. We just started.
And then just the other question on here, it says, the select board will establish goals for the upcoming fiscal year.
Yeah, a lot of the towns had it where you also would come up with a few goals, kind of add or kind of complement her goals because you want to make sure that what you want getting done is also getting done.
Right, so are we, are we doing that or no?
So if so, we should have a agenda item where we have a conversation of goals we want for the town.
I think that would be good because, you know, again, some of what Carolyn laid out tonight, you know, you know, I mean, there may be other things, like we've talked about early on about communication, where there's some threads of that, but other elements that aren't in there right now that maybe we want to get in on there, you know.
Do we want that on two weeks' agenda or four weeks for our discussion?
I agree, two weeks. What did you say?
Do we want that in two weeks or four weeks to put on the agenda for the select board to have that discussion?
Yeah, what do we have so far for the next meeting?
It seems to be filling up.
It's filling up.
Yeah, I can't imagine we'd be doing it on the 18th, maybe the one after that.
Let's go February, first meeting in February.
Because then it'll be helpful because now, I mean, because obviously that was a lot tonight, so then we can take what Carolyn's already done.
And say, yeah, this one's, I really like this one, I want to.
Yeah, and again, kind of either condense it or.
Collaborate with you on it.
All right, so on the first February meeting, select board would like to have a discussion of their goals.
By the way, I can update the review to kind of pull up some of that pandemic stuff and add it up.
So one of the questions I had was, it looks like department heads are going to be encouraged, at which level of employee do you say, no, we don't want your input on this?
Ideally, it'd be good to get at all levels, you know, because Carolyn does interact with everyone all the time. So, I mean, the department heads are focused, that's who she works one-on-one with the most and there are a lot of them, but we could also open it up to some others if we wanted to.
When I've done it before, it's been a representative sample. It hasn't been like every.
Employee.
Every employee and it hasn't even been every department heads. It's typically the people. people that you work most closely with.
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't say you would do, that would be too many.
It's a lot.
It's a lot. You know, you would do with the people that you deal with the most, the DPW, the chiefs, COA.
So I would, you know, if.
Yeah.
I would like an opportunity to have it from each department head. There are some people, some employees that aren't a department head, and I work closely with Gary on a regular basis. There's positions like that that are really important. There's some staff that I don't have any real contact that would make sense, but, you know, even in the divisions with Hydrate and Water and Sewer, there are certain individuals that work on a regular basis that, but it's your call.
Well, and I think most department heads, if they know that you interact with their staff on a regular basis, it kind of behooves them to get the feedback from their staff to say, hey, I'm doing this for Carolyn, you know, do you have any input?
Or the option of saying, do you have, do you want to do your own form? And I think we leave that up to Jen to say, wait a minute, enough is enough.
Seventy-five of them will say enough's enough, because I don't mind compiling, you know, a few more, just so that we have.
Well, and I think you actually should, you know, be the one to, you know, you have a handle on those things. I think it should really, if it's your job, you can go out and solicit.
I can do that.
How's that sound?
Sounds good.
I'm not taking your job, you do your job.
The one thing I would say at the bottom of this procedure page, it does say that everything would be considered work products and wouldn't be publicly released. That was pulled from other towns, but then Dan actually brought to my attention that would ask you to have actually publicized all of your individual ones, just for transparency and to make sure that, you know, everything was kind of above board, so I would probably take that.
We did it two ways. I went back through my old folders because trying to get the cobwebs off. We did a composite a couple of times where the chair took the individual board members' feedback and put it into one scoring grid, and that's what was public. And then there was one year where each board member, it all went into board docs individually, every comment that everybody had made.
We didn't always have board docs, I'll say that much since I've been on the board, you know. Paper.
Yeah, and actually, the one that was individual was all paper, and it went into the minutes with their, yeah.
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 Been on too long. Okay. All right.
So where do we go from here?
So by the February meeting, at that meeting, you'll talk goals, we'll have updated sheets, we'll have a good 360, and I'll compile a list of who we're planning on soliciting.
You're going to wait a month before you start soliciting?
I'd like to already start it.
Yeah, get started. It's good. Okay.
So, and with the other form, we can start on our own as select board members.
So presumably, we'd have every, all the feedback would be in, in February, in the month of February, right?
Yes, I'd like you to have the input from 360 when you're doing it, so.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, and I can, we can keep them updated. I can even forge a form of 360 that we sell.
Yep, sounds good. Thank you, Carolyn. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you for paying attention.
All right.
Can we skip to the police so that they can get out of here tonight?
Well, we're going pretty quickly. Hadley Housing Authority is moot.
Was that a no?
It will be there in three minutes. Hadley Housing Authority is moot because the governor appointed David Moskins last week. Annual town meeting warrant, we need to vote to open it.
Motion to open annual town meeting.
You have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Jennifer?
Roll call, Nevin Smith, Changelou, Parsons.
Yes.
Isner.
Keegan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Shyla's resignation letter, you have all seen.
Move to accept.
You have a second?
Second.
With regrets.
With regrets, definitely.
So with regrets, and she has stated in here that she would be willing to work as much as she can to help with the changeover or whatever we're going to call it.
Her DM.
And do we need to do anything about that, or?
I wanted you to have that, and if you want to put that in the motion, so.
So moved.
Yeah, so I talked to her this afternoon, or this morning, and she's willing to do whatever she can, so I think we should be willing to allow her to do that, so. And Jane said she, I mean, Joyce said, so moved, so I'll second that part of the motion as well.
All right. So roll call vote, Jennifer?
Roll call, Nevin Smith, Changelou, Parsons.
Yes.
Isner.
Yes.
And Keegan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will jump to the police employment status change discussion.
You have authority over him, so you can't make it happen.
Yeah, you're in charge.
Thank you for having me. I will try to be quick. So, last meeting, I briefed you a little bit about the situation we have with our two full-time officers, brand-new officers, who are currently on what they call waivers from the MPTC, which is the Mass Municipal Police Training Commission. The, what a waiver is, without getting too much into the minutia of this nonsensical argument, what a waiver is, is it basically is a way for police departments to request the ability to allow officers with the baseline level of training to work as full-time police officers prior to attending a police academy, okay? So basically, what they're saying is, is because of exigent circumstances, short staffing, all of these reasons which we have to provide, they are saying, these officers are good to go, we will back up the initial train that they've had as trained officers. Now, because of the reform bill, there are now two different ways to become trained as full-time police officers. One of them is the full-time police academy, which both of these individuals were set to go to. Without getting, again, into the minutia as to why they did not attend the academy, one of them was the medical leave that we've talked about, we don't want to get into again. The other way to become a certified full-time police officer now is what they are calling, and what the MPTC has designed, as what they call the Bridge Academy. I'm not a huge fan of it, however, they say that when you mix their initial base-level training with the Bridge Academy, that is enough, according to the new reform bill, to suggest that this person is now certified as a police officer. Now, our issue is this. I have one of those officers in that Bridge Academy now. He's attending classes while he's working. Most of it is, the classroom portions are online, and then there's three different sections that he has to attend in person. The other officer can't begin attending those trainings until July.
July?
Somewhere around there. July. The MPTC has told us, this is no good. Your officer's waivers are expired because they were supposed to attend the full-time police academy. It is MPTC policy that those waivers expire. Mitch and I have both spoken to two different individuals from the training council. I spoke directly with the director of training, and Mitch spoke with the deputy chief of training. Both of us apparently made strong enough arguments that they are going to take our arguments and send it to their legal counsel from the state. Essentially, what we contended was that the CMR, the actual law, suggests nothing of the sort, that the MPTC committee has the right or the ability to revoke a waiver or in any way say that it is expired until it hits the prescribed within the law 270-day period. Neither one of those officer's waivers on that 270 days expires for another few months. So at minimum, it just buys us some time. What I am here before, I'm going to stop explaining that because it gets even more confusing, and I'll probably lose my temper. So what I am here before the board tonight to ask you is this. We have not gotten an answer from their legal department yet. They are likely going to come back and tell us one of two things. One of the things is going to be, you've made a strong argument, your waivers will continue until their regular 270-day expiration. We have a whole other speed bump that we're going to try to cross and try to actually extend one of the waivers if they say that, but we're not going to say that too too loud just yet. Or they may come back and say to us, we don't care, this is our policy, we are allowed to make these policies and promulgate these rules that are expired. If that happens, that means that by the letter of the law, we cannot call these two officers full-time police officers. That is literally the change that we will have to make. They will still be certified in any of their actions on duty as police officers by the same MPTC, so long as we call them part-time officers and actually demote them to part-time status. That's how crazy this is. It is literally a title change. They are so new on their careers that this isn't going to affect their retirement status or anything like that because it's such a short period of time. But we will have to change their status, and we will have to change the way that we offer them shifts. They will lose their shifts, and ultimately, for the first month, because of the way the schedule is set up, we'll be okay because we're heavy on staffing. But after that, in the coming months, technically, those shifts will have to be offered out to our full-time staff first, and then we can give them back to these officers so that they can continually get their health insurance and be regularly scheduled for their 20-plus hours a week or whatever, whatever it says, 20-plus hours a week. So, all of that being said, what I'm asking is this. If the worst-case scenario happens and the MPTC comes back and says their waivers are expired, they need to immediately be removed from full-time status and move to part-time status, we can't wait two weeks. If they come back tomorrow and say that, I can't have them working shifts for two weeks in the event, I mean, goodness knows, this town ain't getting any safer, clearly. So if something happens and their training gets called into question, that's not something that we want to do. As ridiculous it is as it is, I would like to have the boards, the board vote and give Carolyn and I permission that if the MPTC says they cannot work as full-time police officers, you must drop them to part-time, that we would have the authority to do that with your consent today, in the event that we can't get to another meeting quick enough, and put it for 40. So that's what I'm asking.
So moved.
You got it behind, Amy's got it.
Yep.
Second.
Whatever.
Any other discussion? God bless you.
You can have whatever you want.
Jennifer, roll call.
Got it.
We're doing a roll call vote.
Sorry.
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith, Changelou, Parsons.
Yes.
Isner.
Yes.
And Keegan.
Yes.
Okay, now you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you can get on your helicopter.
I'll send you an email.
Good luck, chief. Fine, thank you. See what kind of lawyer you are. And great job being done by our department, too. Thank you very much.
All right, Scott.
Welcome.
Let's do the abatement. We did this abatement last time, you may recognize, there was a technical glitch.
Glitch.
So.
I actually don't see it here. Where is it?
It's at the bottom.
5.59.
I'll put it on mine right after. Like after the police status change discussion.
Oh, Alec one.
Yes.
A gun one.
All right, so.
I would recommend granting the abatement due to the fact that we cannot test the meter to prove its accuracy, and in our previous discussion, that this is not a normal thing for us to grant an abatement. We usually deny them, but under this circumstance, I would recommend that the abatement be granted.
For $51.54?
No.
Forty?
Forty-eight dollars and 55 cents. If you scroll down, keep scrolling to the last page. So this was, we, we did not vote, I'm not, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
You did not vote a specific number, so we needed to get this back on. It's 48.55.
Forty-eight fifty-five for the water abatement for a gun quick drive.
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Joyce, second by Molly. Jennifer, please.
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith.
Changelou.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Isner.
Yes.
And Keegan.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Scott.
All right. Jennifer, license renewals, anything here?
You'll notice in board docs, there are two renewals for tonight. One is a common vicular, and one is a class-two auto dealer. Since there are only two, I did not make a spreadsheet, but I would ask you to approve both of those, and then hopefully, I'll be back in the office before the end of the week, and I will get the last of our people rounded up and get them in here for the 18th.
Do you need those approved separately because they're two separate categories or just the two together?
Um, I believe you can do them together, if that's okay with y'all, since there's just the two of them.
I'll make a motion to approve the common vic license for Inspired by Opportunity, Doing Businesses Wendy's, and the class-two auto dealer license for Northwest Auto Sales, too.
Second.
Second to Amy, I'll give it to her. All right, Jennifer, roll call, please.
Roll call, Nevin Smith.
Changelou.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Isner.
Yes.
And Keegan.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and lastly, we have discussed reviewing the fees from the various departments and whether they're covering costs of the departments, and we have a lot of schedules here, and is there one compiled of all of these?
So these came in a little late, and I did have to send a couple back to get some recommendations. So what I would recommend is take a look at these, but I'd really like to get this on one document so it's easier for you guys to look at.
That would be easier.
You know, and I'm still waiting for two more, so.
Well, then we can't look at them.
I just felt I didn't want to take it off, but feel free to take a look, poke around, and you go on with your book, yeah.
All right.
Thank you to the departments that cut those down, I appreciate it.
All right. Other items not anticipated 48 hours in advance.
Can I, just a reminder, Molly had asked for a description of the town administrator's role in the select board. It's in, it's in under my section, so.
Yeah, I saw that, and is that something that at some point in time, we should talk about it?
Yeah, and I think it's good to look at it as you look at the performance review and what the bylaws says about the town administrator. It was really hard for me to find anything on the role of the select board in having it, so.
Yeah, no, yeah, I think that, that's, that's what I'll, I've ever seen, the Selectman's Handbook, DMNA.
Yeah, so.
We just wing it.
We can discuss that at the same time we're looking at our goals and see if we want to change the goals of the select board. Oh, great, after all these years.
We have some restrictions to a master no loss, so that.
Shucks.
Can't get crazy here.
We have some limited.
All right, we've already done.
So I had, I had one thing I just wanted to bring up quick, which was unexpected, but I just wanted to make a comment about the plastic bag ban. Walmart was a cluster over there. They didn't have bags, they had nothing. People that shopped, they didn't know anything about it when they went into the store. I thought that they could use the bags that are being. I thought that they could use the bags that are being used in Northampton, which have been in effect in Northampton at Walmart for probably the last, probably three years, I think, because they put the ban on plastic in Northampton probably that many years ago. And...
Oh, yeah.
So they have, they have a great plastic bag over there that's reusable for 125 times, but over here, they don't. They have nothing but those, I gotta wash my mouth, paper bags, which rip.
Yeah.
Which are just disgusting, and they're going to just go out and be thrown, and now you're going to have paper bags all over the place, never mind plastic bags. So they're, they're no good. So just, just an FYI to whoever is doing this plastic stuff, that it's not working.
Well, it's, there's always an adjustment period for people to get used to it, and Walmart was out of bags long before January 1st, because I had several people call me and say, I tried to shop at Walmart and they had no bags, nor did they...
Oh, they were out the days after Christmas.
And they...
I'm a bargain shopper.
So, yeah, different, so, next Monday at 7:00 at the Senior Center, there will be an open meeting, which will also be a Zoom meeting, where the Board of Health, the Climate Change Committee, and yours truly, will be here to ask, to have people ask questions, to explain the law, to explain the various specifics of the law, and to talk about the Form for Abatement. Some smaller businesses who have already purchased their supplies for six months, a year, whatever, and they include things that are forbidden, so to speak, will be given exemptions if they have documentation. We don't want to damage any business. Larger businesses should have planned ahead that they had no bags at all.
Yeah.
I find very interesting. It's not like they went into the system, they just were unprepared.
Yeah, Stop &amp; Shop was fully stocked with paper bags.
Right. And ready, with signs up saying, starting, bring your own bag.
Yeah.
So, anyway, that meeting will be Monday, here, at 7:00, for anyone who is interested. And please spread the word.
It's also Zoom.
Also on Zoom.
Okay, perfect. That fell right into that, didn't it?
Yes. Do you have any announcements for us?
I do. So, the ending of 2022, we certainly did have more than our share of people passing last year. So, you know, we've had a lot of condolences all of last year, and I still have these that will be the ending to last year. I'm hoping that this year will be a lot healthier for people, and I won't have to read as many, so hopefully, people will stay healthy and well for this coming year. So Happy New Year to everybody. We had the passing last, at the end of last year with Irene Paulson, 98 years old, and she was the mother of Connie Michkowski, longtime resident of here in Hadley. Adolf Pupchinsky, father of Jane Zaluski and Dennis Pupchinsky, and their grandchildren, so condolences to Adolf's family, and he also came from a very large family, he had 12 siblings, so there are a multitude of relatives here in Hadley, so condolences to them. We had Josephine Kostik, which was 101, so longtime resident here. She was very active, you could see her out mowing her lawn all the time, so condolences to her family. Charlie Malik passed away, husband of Ellie and daughter Cindy and David, and he was a Legion member and a longtime resident here in Hadley also, so condolences to his family. And that's all I have for, for that.
Anybody else have any announcements? Amy, I know that it would be appreciated if you could sign some papers at the Select Board office. May I have the motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Joyce.
Second.
Second by Molly.
Oh, wait a minute.
Wait.
Wait.
No, I don't know if you can read those yet, though.
I could read one. It was Alex McCreskey also passed away, and that was in the newspaper, so that I can speak to that also, so condolences to the McCreskey family. The other one, no, Amy.
Okay. I have a motion in a second to adjourn. Jennifer, roll call, please.
Roll call, Nevin Smith.
Hello?
There you are.
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith.
Yes.
Changelou.
Yes. Do you know that person?
Parsons.
Yes.
Isner.
Yes.
And Keegan.
Yes.
Thank you all.
All right.